This meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Swichy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I know Ruth Perez is here and should be. We were kind of late getting out of the other meeting, so I think it...
Yeah, I don't think we have to excuse her. We know she's here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. First, thanks, Megan. First item, we have a couple of very special presentations. So I'll start with the senior center staff recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Kelly Beamer, Community Services Administrator. It is my pleasure to introduce Debbie Little, our Recreation Coordinator. Debbie's going to share an amazing story of a couple of our staff members. Debbie?
Good evening, President Corman, council members, and Mayor Law. I am Debbie Little from the Renton Senior Activities Center, and I'm going to share a wonderful story that happened at the senior center. It was Thursday, October 15th, and keep in mind, every Thursday, we have a Thursday afternoon dance from 1:00 to 3:00. And on this particular day, we had a Recreation Staff Meeting for the part-time, or so the full-time staff were not in attendance. And on this particular day, our part-time people are managing the senior center. And about 2:30 in the afternoon, one of the dancers runs up and says, "Someone's down, someone's down." Keeping in mind that when that happens at the senior center, normally it's they're on the floor and they've fallen. And being a dance, that's kind of what goes through your head. Well, our staff member, Lisa Weevag, was the first to run out there. She goes into the dining room, and so in her mind, she's thinking, "He's fallen, so you want to check that there's no broken bones, don't move them." Those are what, things that are going on in her mind at the time. She comes in, and the gentleman, Hal Murphy, is down. He is down and out. There's two nurses that are in attendance. So Lisa goes to Hal and realizes that he's not responding, checks his pulse, listens to his breathing, again, not responding. So she runs and gets the AED at the senior center. Thank goodness we have those. So she goes back into the auditorium, and in the meantime, two nurses, and they happen to be sisters, Dee Burgess and Mary Coons, are with Hal at the time, and again, doing the pulse and doing the breathing, and realizing that, mm, there's a really faint heartbeat, and we better use the AED. So she gets that, goes in there, and puts on the paddles for the AED, and it does say, yes, do proceed with shock, with the shock. And the bottom line is, with the quick action of our 911, our staff calling, the use of the AED, Hal is here today, and we're very thankful for that. And I'd like to recognize Lisa Weevag. You want to stand up, please? Patty Wills, she actually was the one that called 911. Thank you, Patty. Dee Burgess was one of the nurses that helped with this incident. And her sister, Mary Coons. And our wonderful friend, victim, but here today is Hal Murphy. So, yep, Hal's back doing Tai Chi, and he's back at the afternoon dance, so things are good.
That is great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the people that did the right thing at the right time. And Hal, it's good to have you with us. Thank you very much.
Life is better the second time around.
That's good to hear. That's great. Well, this is, you know, this is just appropriate, that we're going to follow this up with a very special presentation from the Renton Fire Department Chief. Peterson's coming forward. I know we've got a lot of family members here, and so I want you to feel free to either come back here or come in front if you want to take photos. You're welcome to go anywhere, and it's absolutely fine.
Mayor Law, Members of the Council, Mark Peterson, Fire Chief. One of the reasons why we enjoy living in King County and have one of the best save rates in the world, 60%, is because of people like this, who aren't afraid to get involved, who know what to do, do the right thing. And we wouldn't be as successful without that. The AED proved valuable in this case, and I, again, take my hat off to the citizens that got involved and made a difference in this gentleman's life. So it brings me pleasure to come before you tonight to recognize some of our employees and some of the things that have happened within the Fire and Emergency Services over the last year. We're going to recognize a promotion tonight. We're going to recognize some folks that retired. Unfortunately, all the retired folks aren't here, so I don't know...
Don't understand that.
I don't get that piece.
Too many guests.
Anyway, and then we're going to talk about Members of the Year, and then some of our Company of the Year awards, our Engine Company, Ladder Company, and Aid Company of the Year. And I want to recognize the company for a unit citation, so... Tonight, we're going to recognize Ryan Morgan as a promotion from firefighter to lieutenant. Ryan came to us in January of 2000 and was promoted to lieutenant on October 16th of 2015. And Ryan worked hard for this. He's taken many lieutenant's exams throughout the years, and that's probably the most difficult position to get in this fire department. It's a lot of testing, a lot of studying. The family's put on hold while you study, and there's a lot of stress in the testing process, and in the end, Ryan succeeded. And tonight, his wife Gina is going to pin his badge on him. Gina?
So Ryan, with part of this, you'll have to face the cameras here. A sideways shot will be okay.
We have over 130 years' worth of service to the city combined with these members. And the first member is Lieutenant Shannon Sedleczek, who was hired in 2000, achieved the rank of lieutenant on 2015, or excuse me, I don't have her rank date, but she retired on October 2nd of 2015 with 15 years of service. And Lieutenant Sedleczek did a lot to contribute to our department. She brought a wealth of knowledge. She was a former attorney-at-law and decided to change careers in midstream and came to Renton and provided a lot of good service to our city. Next is firefighter Keith Pickett. Keith came to us in February of 85. He retired in January of this year after nearly 31 years of service. And Keith was a very quiet contributor, guy you couldn't rattle. He just, every day, he came to work and he gave 110%, but you couldn't rattle the guy. It doesn't matter what was going on out there, he was just a quiet, calm contributor to the city. Firefighter Chuck Hagen, hired on the same date that Keith did, in February of 85. He retired in February of 16 after 31 years of service. And Chuck was a unique individual. That guy, he came to work every day wanting to make it a better place to work. He took classes, and coming back from the classes, he would teach those classes. He was one of the founding members of the dive team. He also was instrumental in our self-contained breathing apparatus program, getting that a start, getting it in compliance with state law. Everywhere you turned, there was Chuck's fingerprints on something, and he's one of those guys that, when he came into this department, he saw a need, and he wasn't satisfied with just saying, "We saw a need." He was always willing to make a change, and he really left the department and the city in a better position than when he got here. So Chuck is after 31 years. The longest-serving tenured employee that we're recognizing is Battalion Chief Tally Hall. Tally was hired in 1975 and retired in 2014 after 38 and 1/2 years of service. Tally, he was my company officer when I was a firefighter and driver at Engine 13. He demanded nothing but the best from his staff. But with that said, he gave you the best. He knew customer service before customer service was a buzzword in the fire service. He always went out and strove to do the best for his community, and he made sure that we did the right thing at the right times. And last but not least is Lieutenant Brad Gould. He was hired on February 1st of 85, and he retired on March 31st of last year, or two years ago, on 14th with 29 years of service. Brad, again, is one of those folks that, he was our Ladder Company Officer, and he was very good at his craft, and he knew how to pass that craft on to others. He wasn't one that would sit around and look at things. He was always out there training, and he expected his crews out there to be trained, and when it came time to really perform, they were out there top-notch and they were ready to go. Brad was one of those guys that everyone else around the room would be scratching their head at a problem, but Brad would walk in the room and says, "Well, gee, let's try this." And all of a sudden, you could see the light bulbs coming on all the people's heads going, "Why didn't I think of that?" So again, a very good contributor. Every one of these members gave the city 110% every day they came to work, and I'm proud that they were served, and I'm proud to be their leader at the time. Thank you. Members of the Year. This is an honor that is given to our Members of the Year. So we have a firefighter, fire officer, EMT, and civilian Member of the Year. And these members are voted on by their peers. They're nominated for Employee of the Quarter once they receive that, or they receive a another sort of honor, like a unit citation, and they're allowed to be part of the firefighter of the year or Employee of the Year nomination. And so these members are looked upon from their peers. It's not something that I select, it's from their peers, so it really means a lot to these folks. And so our firefighter of the year is Mr. Ken Clinton. Ken is a, this is the second time I've awarded him firefighter of the year. Ken is one of these folks that, he comes to work every day, again, looking at how to make the department better, how to serve the city the best. He's always looking at things. He works with shops a lot to make sure that, you know, we're, our rigs are running right, but it's not, it's all for the right reasons. And so it's my pleasure to give Ken firefighter of the year for 2015. So EMT of the Year, Mr. Steve Trilhial. Would you come forward? So Steve is... Is aid 12, you write a lot?
Aid 13.
Aid 13, so it's a busy unit. And he was selected as EMT of the Year because he became a CBT, or Criteria-Based Trainer, for our EMT skills. So every year, they have to have so many hours of continuing education in order to maintain your EMT certification. He's also embraced the Electronic Patient Care Reporting System. We gave an overview to the Public Safety Committee tonight about this new program of going away from paper and using Surface Pros to document our aid reports. So who better than a younger member of our organization that knows computers and technology and stuff to be able to do those kinds of things? But he also teaches and mentors other crew members, and it's really a tribute. Being an EMT in the Renton organization has always been something that is taken seriously. When I hired on him back in 1980, the senior aide man, or the Sam, that was, he took me off to the side and said, "That's our bread and butter, we do it right." And that tradition's always carried on. We've always had people who stepped to the plate and done that, and Steve is one of those folks that have done that, just unselfishly. So Steve, congratulations. Lieutenant Steve Winter, would you step forward? So Steve kind of plays a dual role in our organization. He plays the labor union president, which has its demands of its own, not only from the administration side, but from his members' side. They really, they want to make sure that their interests are being looked after, and Steve does a very good job of that. He also works at Station 11, Engine 11, and now has transferred over to Ladder 11. And again, there's a guy that goes out and trains, and trains, and trains to make sure that they're ready for whatever's presented in front of them. And you can see that. You can see it in our performance indicators, is when we try to stop a fire to the room of origin, these guys are the guys that do that. And it takes good leadership, and Steve is a leader of the department now, and he's going to be a leader of the future of the department. And, you know, just the things that Steve does and he brings to the table really benefit not only the department, but the city. So Fire Officer of the Year, Steve Winter. So our department couldn't run without a good support staff. We've got all the firefighters out on the street, and they do a very good job of what they do. Without the support staff, they would be sunk. And one of the best members of our organization in the support staff that was selected by, again, their peers, is one who has not been here but maybe a year, year and a half, and that's Linda Mann. And Linda's our first voice when you call on the phone to talk with the fire department. She's our, she's the door that people see. Never have I seen Linda with a scowl on her face. She's always got a smile, she's always got a bright, cheerful attitude, and it reflects out in the whole office space. Our office just runs like a clock over there, and it's because of people like Linda who come to work every day, doing their best, and she takes on tasks that a lot of people go, "Oh, how am I going to do that?" And she says, "No problem, I'll take care of it." And she does, and she does very good at it. She's made really good connections with all members of the organization. She's looked on with a lot of respect and admiration, and I'd like to congratulate Linda on being selected as Citizen of the Year. Now, for our top engine company, ladder company, and aid company. Unfortunately, our members of the ladder company aren't here, but being on a ladder company, there's only three crews that staff that ladder company, and there's a lot of pride in going and doing ladder work. Ladders work is mostly your, you know, forcible entry, they're doing them heavy extrication, you know, they're doing the ventilation, rescue, those kinds of things. They don't take the hose into the fire, they think that's for, you know, engine companies to do that. They'll take a, they'll take a water can in and put the fire out and say, "Who needs engine companies? In time's a budget, we need them." Anyway, so Ladder 11 was selected as the top ladder company, and this was a selection made by the shift battalion chief. So they selected all these different companies, and it's interesting to watch these guys select these companies because there's a little bit of bias on each one of those battalion chiefs, who they think the best company is. But they all agreed with Ladder 11 on B Shift. As indicated by Battalion Chief Anderson, your crew consistently exemplifies our department values with the emphasis you place on hands-on training, pre-incident planning. You and your crew always display a positive attitude that is infectious to the other crews. Your performance throughout the year is deserving a selection of top ladder company. And that is Lieutenant Roger White, firefighter Mike Boyer, firefighter David LaHa, and firefighter Marcus Riss-Miller. Top engine company. This company is one that you wonder if I got a bunch of arsonists on it. They've been on three or four multiple alarm fires as the first-in-unit, and each time, they've gone in and done a fantastic job of keeping the fire in check, putting it out. And one of the incidents, we'll talk a little bit in a minute about why they deserved the unit citation also, but can I have Lieutenant Sammerson, Jim Rush, and Chip Slothauer come forward? This is Engine 13 from C Shift. These guys, and I'll just write what their battalion chief wrote. During 2015, you and your crew responded to three two-alarm fires. They all could have been catastrophic if your initial reactions had not been highly professional and skilled. As indicated by B.C. Peru, at one of the fires, your crew safely rescued five occupants from the second and third-floor story apartments, then went away and above to protect the contents of the units and assist the occupants. In all three fires, you and your crew's actions stopped the fire spread within minutes before help arrived. You have shown great respect for our internal and external customers, and it shows your actions with empathy. First-arriving unit on a fire can make or break that incident. By setting up a good command structure, by doing a good size-up, by making sure that they're putting the resources where they need to be, makes a big difference. It helps the battalion chief, when he gets there, he can just carry on and move forward. He doesn't have to stop things and bring them back. And so this is a tribute to this crew, and you're looking at many years of experience here that has done a job well done throughout 2015. And so, thank you, guys. Steven, you're here, and Andrew, could you show it, or come up? So normally, an aid crew has two people on it, but this year, they were, there was three people selected to be the top aid company. And that's based on battalion chief's observations of these gentlemen and how well they do their job. And again, I'll read what the battalion chief said. During 2015, you and your fellow EMTs would ride the aid unit even when you had the opportunity to ride the engine and get more sleep. As indicated by B.C. McDonald, you always moved with purpose when the alarm went off to ensure rapid reaction time, and were always compassionate and understanding with our patients. Your officers have been told that you and your crews are top-notch by the staff at Valley Medical Center and the medics. The relationship you have garnered with them is very evident in observing in their interactions. Again, it goes to show that EMS is a very important function here in Renton, and these gentlemen are models of that. So thank you very much. The unit citation is given to a crew that works together as a team in order to accomplish a goal. And it's not, it's not something we give out a lot, but when we give it out, it really means something. And so the way it works in our organization is that the battalion chief presents the unit citation, pin, and certificate to the members at the time that they get that. So we really don't have anything to give them, but we want to recognize them in front of you. And so I want to bring Jim Rush, Chip Slothauer, and Christopher Boarding forward, please. So in front of you are three members of Engine 13. On December 12th, they performed a rescue of several residents at the Emerald Heights apartment complex. Chip, when you got there, you had fire blown out of the front door, I believe?
Yeah.
Which cut off the access for people to escape this fire, and of course, it's on the third floor. And they went ahead and pulled the ladder and rescued five people off the back balcony. Then they ended up repositioning the ladder and pulling some other people off the second-story balcony, all before anyone else arrived. Then, I think, you took the hose line, put the fire out. Do you remember it?
The aid crew, yeah, from 13.
Yeah, the aid crew from 13, so... As indicated by Lieutenant Neil Sammerson, you and your crew took immediate action upon arrival at the fire, made a ladder rescue, then you entered the structure and assisted two additional victims in getting out of the second story. That's the people that are serving the city of Renton, and that's the people that are serving you. They get there, and this, we're talking at 2:00 in the morning or somewhere in there, it was late at night. They're there doing 100% of the work when it's needed, and they do it right, they do it and make sure that they're successful when they do it. And we have these folks to thank for that. Again, they deserve a good round of applause and our recognition for trouble then. With that, I thank you for the council's time. We appreciate it. Appreciate you sitting through and watching us, and this is very important to our organization. These folks, they put forth a lot of effort to serve their community in the best way they know how. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations to all the firefighters who have been recognized tonight. Excuse me, I know I speak for the council, and I'd say we so much appreciate what you do on a regular basis, and it's, I mean, it's great to have citizens, too, that save lives, and Mark, you were right in the beginning, that's really key to, you know, saving a lot of lives when you have everybody involved, but our firefighters have to go into some really unbelievable circumstances, and a lot of people's lives are saved because of that. So thank you very much, and congratulations for those that have received special honors. I get the feeling we're going to have a mass exodus right now. I hope it wasn't something I said. So with that, we'll go on to administrative report, Mr. Cummings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, exciting news. Apparently, that doesn't help the exodus either. For the public, just wanted you to know that the 2017, 2018 Human Services funding has started, that application process has started. People can look at our website, rentonwa.gov, and look for information. We'll have a flag there, you can get there. Or they can call Diane Utech at 425-430-6655. She can help answer questions and lead them to the online application that they'll need. And then just a couple of streets that we haven't mentioned in the past to make people aware of. We're going to be in the area of North Fourth between Burnett and Logan, doing some paving if weather permitting. We're also going to be in the area of North 28th at 2802 Park Avenue for some storm drainage installation. That is all. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. That was riveting. So we don't have anybody signed up for audience comment. Was there anybody who wanted to address the council? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member, like, pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
I'd like to pull Item B.
Okay. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus Item B.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council approve the consent agenda minus Item B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a, excuse me, a contract to allow former construction to do work at the old city hall to remodel the third floor for the Renton Preparatory School. The committee has discussed this issue several times in the, in the past, and because of that, I move that we concur in the recommendations of the Community Services Department.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that Item B be approved. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor?
Ooh, nobody's working this week, Ms. Swichy.
No unfinished business, because we finished it all, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, Mr. Person.
Well, I guess the Finance Committee's been slackers for the last couple of weeks, because we got five committee reports.
Okay.
Okay, the first Finance Committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on March 14th, 2016, claims vouchers 345292 through 345560, four wire transfers, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,575,543.36, and payroll vouchers, including 758 direct deposits and 49 payroll checks totaling $1,640,227.72. This is signed by the Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The second committee report is regarding fee waivers for Liberty Park and Riverview Park picnic shelters. The Finance Committee recommends... The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the fee waiver request, the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars, for use of the Liberty Park and Riverview Park picnic shelters on May first, two thousand sixteen, during the two thousand sixteen Crop Out Hunger Walk fundraising event sponsored by Renton Enumenso...
Ecamenical.
Enumenso Association of Churches, i.e. Reach. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is an event that's been going on for thirty-one years with Reach, raising money for the, to help with hunger. And so, I'd like to make it the thirty-first year that we approve the fee waivers. So, with that, I move we concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I saw Howard McCumber getting ready to come up here.
I'm sorry, I will not make that mistake again.
Howard, I was not going to let it go by.
Okay, the third committee report is regarding contract for liability third-party administration services. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the three-year contract with Carl Warren and Company for liability third-party administration services with a total annual cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars without prior city approval. Carl Warren and Company will provide claims adjusting services on a time and expense basis. Their services will be assigned and monitored by risk management as necessary to reach settlement and/or closure of liability claims. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the fourth committee report is regarding a reclassification of the HR manager. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the reclassification of the Human Resources Manager position to an HR Labor Relations Classification and Compensation Manager at grade M thirty-six effective immediately. An HR Labor Relations Classification and Compensation Manager will position the Human Resources and Risk Management Department to be more competitive, cost-effective, and efficient in the future. The department will be able to reduce its dependency on labor consultant fees and better build relationships with the city's union leadership. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I was going to make some comment about our new finance director, Human Resources Director. She's done an excellent job, but I won't comment that her first thing is giving somebody a pay raise.
Just so, that shows that she's smart and taking care of her department.
Anyway, I move that council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with this very good idea presented to the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the last Finance Committee report is regarding Meadowcrest Playground Phase Two. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract for the Meadowcrest Playground Phase Two Nature Play Area Project as advertised through the Daily Journal of Commerce to Paul Brothers Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents and to accept a donation of fifty-five thousand dollars from the Renton Community Foundation Charles Custer Fund to complete the project. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract and to adjust the North Highlands Park improvements budget for the fifty-five thousand dollar donation. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning Development Committee has a committee report.
This committee report is regarding City Code Title Four Development Regulations, the two thousand fifteen Docket Group Number Eleven. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the two thousand fifteen Docket, Title Four Docket Group Eleven. However, there are two items the committee recommends be held for further consideration. First, number D dash one-two-one Downtown Business District in order for the committee to reevaluate existing businesses for inclusion within the proposed business district boundary. And second, number D dash one-one-eight Healthy Standards for Housing in order for the Planning Commission to continue their work to evaluate alternatives for implementation and to consider initiation of a pilot project in the Sunset area. The Planning Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the following items be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Item number D dash one-one-six Residential Building Height, number D one-one-seven Density Bonus, number D one-one-nine Street Frontage Improvements, number D one-two-zero Public Meetings and Signs, number D one-two-two Impact Fee Deferral, number D one-two-three Setbacks in Commercial Zones, number D one-two-four Sub-Area Community and District Plans, number D one-two-five Assisted Living, and number D one-two-six Administrative Code Interpretations. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning Development Committee Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McIrvin, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we have no resolutions or ordinance this evening, so moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, before I forget, I would like to make a motion that we cancel the April fourth council meeting and committee meetings. Actually, two of the, two of the council members will be in Nishiwaki with our sister city delegation. I'm going to be attending that. I'll point out, all members of the delegation, including the council, are traveling on their own funds for that. But then, I think we might have one other council member that's going to be absent that evening. So, with that, I would move that we cancel the April fourth council meeting and committee meetings.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council cancel the April fourth council meeting and committee meetings. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, and then, I would also like to announce that committee, the whole meeting for March twenty-first at five-thirty PM in the council chambers. We have three items on that agenda. It's a little bit different than what was published initially. And we're going to be doing some continuation of what we were working on tonight. So, for that meeting, we've got, number one, Eastside Rail Corridor Master Plan, EIS comments. Item two is solid waste spring cleanup options. And then, item three is a continuation of homelessness discussion from tonight. And I did want to ask Mr. Covington if that title captured everything that we didn't get to tonight?
Yes, that should capture.
Okay, good. And then, there was one other item I just wanted to make sure that we followed up on and that was, there were questions, a lot of interest in the, you know, the exciting, we're going to have some consulting work on our downtown to make suggestions how we do that revitalization.
That master plan?
Yes, and there was an RFP that went around and some council members had questions and is that something we should bring back to committee of the whole or, you know, what's council's preference? Would you like to hear individually or?
Yes.
Yep. Committee of the whole, you think? Yeah, okay, so let's just plan that for future committee of the whole. And I don't want to slow down the process, though, at all. So, you said that was a draft, so we should just work it in as soon as you're ready to go.
Yeah, I'm thinking the council is scheduled to discuss downtown revitalization issues on the twenty-eighth of March, so it likely will be done by then, so we would just roll it in then.
Perfect, that's perfect. Okay, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, March twenty-first, at four-thirty, the Transportation Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have three items in the agenda. The first is airport tea hangers, rent increase, the second, temporary road closures for the Sunset Lane New East Improvement Project, and the third will be emerging issues in transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On March twenty-first at three-thirty in the council conference room, the Utilities Committee will have a meeting. Four items on the agenda. The first, request for water service transfer from King County. The second, Level Three Communications LLC franchise agreement. The third, Olympic Pipeline franchise agreement. And the fourth item, Cedar River Maintenance Dredge Project mitigation agreement. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchy?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No new business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, unless Commander Klein wants to address the council, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn?
Okay.
It's been moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?